Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the love of liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Stuart Farrell, but we're going to take a second. Do I see him? Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry. And we're going to take a second. The members of the American Legion would just like to address mayor and council prior to that presentation.
Thank you, madam mayor. My name is Thomas McCullough. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 331 in Stone Harbor, New Jersey. With me this evening is our adjutant, Joe Stanger, and the trustee, John Reddy. And I'd be remiss to not mention former board member and proud member of our post, Ray Parsick. Good afternoon, Mayor Judy, council president Rich, and council. I come here today to recognize one outstanding family on Seven Mile Island who reside in Stone Harbor. We have a lot of wonderful, caring, giving, generous residents that reach out and help veterans such as Rich and Lisa Bateen and Frank and Mary Moreno, who have co-hosted a cornhole tournament for the past 10 years at their residence on Third Avenue and Hurton Third Street. This year, Rich's brother, Pat, suggested the tournament be a fundraiser, and they selected Stephen C. London, American Legion Post 331, to be a recipient of their proceeds. And I'm so glad they did. The tournament was held Labor Day weekend. Five days later, at our general membership meeting, their parents, Rich and Noreen Bateen, who reside on 168 96th Street, presented a check for $2,100 to our post. The day of the tournament, they requested legion members to attend and asked I reach out to Mayor Judy and her husband. Myself, John Reddy, a post trustee, and Mayor Judy and our spouses attended the fundraiser. The event starts, this is good, with the national anthem being played on a large widescreen TV with well over 100 participants, ages nine to 90, snapping to attention, holding their hands on their hearts or saluting the great flag of this country. What a great model Stone Harbor has in this fantastic family. This was followed by a day of food, fun, laughing, and along with great conversations and fellowship. We and the town of Stone Harbor are truly blessed to have a families like the Bateen and the Moreno's. This is truly a reflection on the working relationship we have with the mayor and council and all the departments in Stone Harbor. The American Legion is always included in major events that take place in Stone Harbor. The first thing that Mayor Judy asks is the American Legion included. We greatly appreciate the communications with one another. And this year, taking part in the eyewitness news team's coverage, which was fantastic, it put our building on the map and the legion in this community as well as the community of Stone Harbor, as we all know. We're included in the Craft Show and all Veterans' Day holidays. We enjoy having the mayor and council attend our open houses as well as our 100-year anniversary barbecue this year, which you co-sponsored. And of course, the United States Coast Guard home for the holidays in December this year. That will be on December the 14th. And let me comment on some of your new employees. First of all, Jen Olson, she reached out to us last week. Veterans' Day is coming up. What can the borough of Stone Harbor do for you? Do we need police and public works? We contacted her along with the fire department. So as we spoke before, mayor, the post has been doing this for 43 years. It appears that the commander, each commander, has to reach out to the police, fire, public works on the three veterans, uh, Veterans' Holiday in the course of this year. And we're going to put this on automatic pilot, and it takes a heck of a workload off of volunteers, and we certainly appreciate it. And of course, Kim Parks with the Craft Show, selling tickets for our spaghetti dinners, and she does a fantastic job. We really appreciate you, Kim. In closing, I invite you all to attend our Veterans' Day open house. We will be honoring Mr. Frank Delia, who turns 100 years old on Veterans' Day. Frank is a WWII veteran who landed on D-Day on the beaches of Omaha. Frank is surely going to heaven because he's been through hell when he landed on Normandy. To recognize the importance of this occasion, I invited the state commander of the Department of American Legion. He has a prior commitment, but he's sending his second-in-command, the vice commander of the Department of the American Legion in New Jersey. So he'll be in attendance, and they recognize how important this is. We're going to have schoolchildren from Stone Harbor School presenting Frank birthday cards, singing happy birthday to him. And this is in both communities. The school children will be involved, and both mayors will be reading proclamations honoring Frank for his service and his residence in Stone Harbor. And with that said, I'd like to turn to John Reddy to speak about our spaghetti dinner, which was a wonderful event, which we dedicated to disabled American veterans, which was held last Sunday at a beautiful Stone Harbor Yacht Club. John?
Well, I want to thank council, mayor, everybody participated, the community. We can't thank them enough. I mean, there was over 300 people there for dinner, so it's our all-timer. So having established that we're going to dedicate and give all our proceeds to disabled veterans, so our final count to the amount of money that DAV-44s got is $5,135. So, I mean, it's a hell of a night. So we're going to be at their meeting on Sunday to give them the final check. They got a partial at the spaghetti dinner, but it was a great night. Feedback's been terrific, and it's something to build on again. So thanks, thanks to everybody.
You're welcome. Can I field any questions?
No, but the meatballs were great.
Were they? And I can't recall who, they asked me prior to leaving, they said, where did they purchase the meatballs? And I said, I have no idea. That was you, Josie.
My husband.
Well, I have your answer. The answer is, I went back, talked to head chef, and I said, please, I forget who it is, but someone asked, where did you purchase your meatballs? He got mad. He said, what do you mean, purchase them? I made them!
Homemade.
Oh, my.
Homemade!
Goodness.
So, that's where it came from, but that's an old Polish recipe that he will not part with either. Our brass are going to be in attendance on Veterans' Day from the State Department. If you could have your brass, namely the police chief, fire chief, et cetera, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
I have this letter for your information. May I give it to?
Can hand it right over to Jill?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. We look forward to continuing to work with you. And now we'll get on to our regular agenda. Dr. Stuart Farrell, summer beach condition report. Do you need, you're not going to, we're not putting anything up? Okay.
Nothing at this moment. Thank you, council, mayor, Jill. The work this year is finalized as of the end of May, 2019. The fall survey is due to occur in the next couple of weeks, maybe into mid-October, depending on our scheduling, to do the second of two surveys for the year. The May survey showed some interesting stuff in the fact that sand had already moved quite generously onto the beach itself between the dunes and the high, and the low water line as a result of the fact that there were only two significant modest northeast storms, one in March and an early April event of this spring. So the year before, we had five nor'easters. This year, we only had two. The accumulation of material by the end of May is quite dramatic on the cross-sections we presented in the report we submitted, showing a growth of material as a beach berm right at the edge of the high tide line. So that had already had become quite significant. As a matter of fact, I took a look at this both across the board, from where we start in the, behind the dunes to about 16 feet of water offshore. Yes, the entire beachfront from the Avalon border to the final terminal groin at 123rd Street, lost about 96,000 cubic yards altogether. However, I just looked at the data just on the beach, from the dunes to the low water line, and it turned out that the beach gained 81,000 cubic yards across the board from Avalon to the South Point where it starts. That means offshore provided material both to the beach and to South Point. The aerial shots that we keep taking of South Point since, oh, I guess about 1987, show that since 2014, South Point has gotten wider, not longer. It really can't get any longer because the tidal flow, hydraulically between the rock revetment in North Wildwood and South Point, has now reached the point where it's actually undermining the rock revetment. There's a project to repair a section of the revetment, which literally slid into the channel, taking about half of the material away from in front of the condominiums on the North Wildwood side. So that South Point can only get wider or higher, depending on where the waves put the sand, and right now, they're dumping it out in front on the inner tidal portion of the beach in front of South Point. I guess maybe you got the message from the Philadelphia District about the project anticipation for this coming fall in that they are planning to pump 125,000, 425,000 cubic yards from Towns' inlet onto the Avalon beaches, and then try looking at recycling the excess dune sand, mostly the 112th, 118th Streets, as additional material to feed the beaches in Stone Harbor. The, they don't have the funds to find another site offshore in the immediate future. However, the, shall we say, discussions with the Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service over the coastal barrier resource issue with Hereford Inlet is still ongoing, to be sure. There's a number of processes that are in place that we hope will get a resolution to it. Congressman Van Drew is taking this seriously. He's requested information, proof of what the problem really is in their heads with the Department of the Interior as to why this particular CBRA is off limits for federal dollars being spent moving sand to the adjacent communities which lie outside of the boundary of the CBRA. If Stone Harbor was inside the boundary, no problem, they wouldn't have a problem with it. But because the boundary ends at, where South Point ends, they say, well, this is an interpretation. It was a recent interpretation because they did allow it to happen in a letter of 1996, and then 2003, and then again after Hurricane Sandy. That was another caveat. We had a storm. Oh, it's an emergency. We can put sand on the beaches in Stone Harbor during the emergency. Because I went around the corner to the, I think it was Norfolk dredging trailer with then-mayor Henfee, bless his soul. We kind of leaned on them to turn the pipe around to feed sand to North Wildwood after Hurricane Sandy. And that's been the last hydraulic stuff that's happened out of Hereford Inlet unless the state of New Jersey pumps it like they did in 2017, when they pumped some sand to Stone Harbor from the inlet, ran out of money, and the Army Corps pumped sand from Towns' inlet all the way down here, spending $6 million extra. There's about 25 million yards of sand in the borough zone alone out in Hereford Inlet. The last time we surveyed it for real was the fall of 2018. This year, the NJDEP has decided not to survey it because they have other problems that they have spent the money on. So we keep following it with air photography. A fellow by the name of Ted Kingston flies regularly, and he takes pictures with a very high-quality camera that we pay him to process. We don't pay him to fly. That's a service. Pay him for his pictures. That's a product. I work for the state. There's funny things about that. Anyway, the beaches are in pretty good shape because in 2017, there was about 700,000 yards total placed on the beaches, and lion's share of it is still on the shoreline. So that's about where it stands. We hope that these hurricanes, by Thursday, it's going to be four to eight feet offshore breaking on the beach, but they're going to be very long-period waves, which act like giant pushbrooms shoving that offshore sand towards the coast as they do so, because they just dig deeper because they're longer in wavelength than their normal waves you see every day. But we have a lot of southeast this summer, and that all moves sand north along the shoreline. So I don't think South Point got a whole lot bigger in July and August and September so far. So that's where we stand at the moment, and the plan is to do the bulk, the lagoons, in October after the majority of the boats are removed for the winter season. Fewer questions, you know, why are you doing this? Who are you? Why are you here? In my, front of my boat? Okay. So, the long story short is, we wait on that until there's, it's a lot less complicated because you don't have to zigzag around all the vessels that are coming and going and everything else. So we'll get to that in the, sometime in October. Questions?
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Farrell?
No, I don't.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any communications?
Yes, mayor, we have a letter from Ann Jaeger. Dear Mayor Judy Davies-Dunn, our, it's hard to believe summer's winding down. We're looking forward to many wonderful fall weekend activities in our lovely town of Stone Harbor. We want to thank you and the borough of Stone Harbor for making the enhancements to the public bathrooms at 96th Street and the water tower. Most importantly, the inclusion of the accessible family bathroom. We've used it personally throughout the summer with our daughter, who was in a wheelchair. We have noticed so many families and individuals with special needs using the accessible family bathroom. Public Works did an excellent job maintaining the bathrooms throughout the busy summer. Please read this letter into the minutes. I also wanted to mention how great the new tops on all the trash and recycling containers look throughout the town. The trash and recycling are labeled so well. The borough is always looking, working to keep our town looking great.
I need a motion, receiving Mrs. Jaeger's communication, putting it into the record.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Yes, I'd, since all the members of council have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the work session and the meeting of August 20th, 2019, and our work session and meeting of September 3rd, 2019, if there's no additions or corrections, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and that they be approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll move on. Resolution 2019 S. 145.
I offer resolution 2019 S. 145 for adoption. Second. This is a bond anticipation note sale in the amount of $14,459,000.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 146.
I'd like to offer resolution 2019 S. 146 for adoption.
Second.
This is a, we're accepting a generous donation of a pediatric beach wheelchair.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 147.
Madam mayor, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 147 for adoption.
Second.
This is awarding the sole bid, which was made by Zone Striping Inc. in the amount of $108,337.77 for work on the bike lanes in town.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 148.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution 2019 dash S dash 148 for adoption. Second. This, this resolution is a bid award, contract award for bulkhead construction on 94th Street and 114th Street. Total amount is $430,000, or $430,300. The award winner was R.A. Walters and son. The Cape May Courthouse, there were six bidders involved.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 149.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution S. 149 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution provides for the purchase of radio equipment under a state contract.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 S. 150.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution S. 150 to extend the summer, summer officer's endorsement for Class II.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
I need a motion authorizing the Crest Memorial Boys Soccer Team to play five games in the fall.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a permit for the annual bonfire for October 5th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no items for discussion, I need a motion approving the bill list.
I have an item for discussion.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion tonight, and the motion is that we, the borough, do not purchase the Smugglers Cove property. Second.
Any discussion?
I don't think we have enough information at this time to make that determination.
I agree. I think we're still midstream in gathering information and disseminating amongst council as well as the public extraordinarily premature for this to take place, in my opinion.
I would just discourage that a decision be made tonight because it's not on the agenda. So anybody wishing to speak either for or against this issue has not even been noticed that it was going to be on the agenda for tonight, and I think that's quite a disservice to our constituents, our taxpayers, and our stakeholders.
I agree.
Totally. I disagree. I think we had last week, two weeks ago at the council meeting, we had ample discussion of the Smugglers Cove project, and I don't know what additional information we could possibly hope to get on this project that makes any sense. I mean, I, a year ago, I started with a presentation at council when I was just an ordinary citizen, saying I thought this was a crazy idea. The borough does not belong in the business of purchasing property to be a landlord, even though we are a landlord for the beach rental units down there.
And the Chamber of Commerce building.
Okay, and the Chamber of Commerce building.
Yes.
I don't think we need to be a landlord for Smugglers Cove. I think that there is ample opportunity for doing what has been expressed as a desire to keep Smugglers Cove going at the marina. And instead of thinking of Smugglers Cove, I think we should be thinking about the marina as a place to provide gasoline, bait, restaurants. There's ample room down there. I, I took a, I took a ride down to Smugglers Cove a couple of weeks ago, and I took a ride to the marina area, and I was astounded by the amount of space the marina offers for the project that is being proposed for Smugglers Cove. Smugglers Cove is a, is a, I think it's a bad idea. The borough is going to commit itself, would commit itself to $7 million, and that money would be much better spent on upgrading the marina to provide exactly the same services and products to the visitors and the residents of Stone Harbor.
Well, I would offer to you that the discussion we should be having right now is not whether or not we have the motion, whether or not we buy Smugglers Cove, or I think it's more whether or not a point of order, that is it appropriate to, to, without noticing our stakeholders, our constituents, our taxpayers, that action was going to be taken on an item, not only as our stakeholders were not noticed, half of the governing body was not noticed. And I feel that this is, it's, it's out of order in, in the, in that respect, that it's not on the agenda. And I think it's a disservice to the public that they would have no opportunity to even weigh in on this, not placed on the agenda. I have agenda meetings one week prior to every council meeting. At that time, the agenda is set, and it is set so it can be published, so the public knows what will be discussed, so the public can be a part of that discussion. That's exactly why we publish an agenda, so we don't, one day, without people not even being aware, just conduct business. And I think it's a great disservice to our taxpayers. That's why we publish an agenda, to say what's going to be on it, to say what we're going to discuss, and to say what action's going to be taken. Furthermore, to make this motion, and Josie, the council president, who made this motion, a- motion, attends those agenda meetings. She never asked to put this on the agenda tonight. I, I just find that astounding, astounding representation to our taxpayers. We were at the same meeting. You never asked to put this on the agenda and that's why we meet. So to just ambush the taxpayer, your colleagues, is astounding and inappropriate. And honestly, if this was some sort of, I don't know, some sort of little conspiracy, you know, I hope you're proud of yourselves, but I find it out of order, astonishing, inappropriate. And I, I can't even, I don't even know where to go from there. We try to sit up here and responsibly represent our taxpayers and this is irresponsible. You attend that agenda meeting, you didn't even bring it up, nor have you brought it up since. And we routinely add items following the agenda meeting and you know that. And you should be ashamed of yourself if this is how you represent the taxpayers, by ambushing your fellow elected officials.
It is my understanding that we have a motion on the floor.
And I will proceed with that emotion, that motion, and my emotion. I run this meeting. I am still in discussion. I will call for that vote. Does anyone else have anything to say?
Just to repeat, I think, I think we're still in discovery phase in, in several areas concerning this and I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Frank. I understand your position, but I believe we are now just beginning to hear from the proponents of acquisition of Smugglers Cove. I mean, we still run into people who know nothing about it, who haven't followed this in, in council, who've, who've asked for more information. And I think once it gets out there, we're going to hear a lot more from the public in favor of acquisition as opposed to opposed to it. I think we owe them that, that, that time. It's not costing us anything to wait a little bit and see what comes forward.
Another point is the planning board met last evening and the planning board requested to have presentations on Smugglers Cove to, so that they can weigh in on how the planning board feels collectively on this issue as well. So I think in that regard also, it's premature. It's really premature and
What additional information are you looking for?
It deserves further vetting by the professionals that, that sit on that planning board and it's disrespectful to that board as well to make a decision before they even have an opportunity to vet the process.
Is it any more disrespectful to the planning board that we've not acted on the marina?
It's disrespectful to the taxpayers that we did not put this on the agenda properly and in the same exact fashion we put everything on the agenda for discussion.
This isn't the first time that we've had a motion introduced at a meeting that hadn't been previously listed on the agenda, so it is not an anomaly.
It is an anomaly to not discuss things in the work session and then we say, let's put it on for the regular meeting. That is usually what we do. No one asked me, I set the agenda, to put this on for today in any form or fashion. And again, I will reiterate, I have agenda meetings every other Tuesday. In between Tuesday and Friday, we continue to talk about things that might then come up and they get added to the agenda. There was ample time for this. I would offer also that the president of council attends those agenda meetings and is more than aware of what the process is. I would also offer that the reason we have those agenda meetings is so the public is aware of what will be discussed and may weigh in. It is inappropriate, in my opinion, to throw this motion out there. Also, I will add this, how often do we simply throw motions out here with half the people sitting up here having no idea it's even coming up? And if this is the way we're going to start to conduct ourselves by ambushing one another, I really think that tactic needs to be thought better, thought out a little better. If that's going to be the way this governing body does business, is through ambush, it's If no one else has anything to say, yes, there is a motion on the floor. Yes, we had a second and I'm going to call for a vote. I'm speechless. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I would like to know what additional information you're looking for that would bring the question of Smugglers Cove to a resolution.
Well, I will offer you this, excuse me, Ray, we have not even negotiated a price.
I don't care.
That's pretty big. We don't even, we can't, we have not even begun to negotiate a price. I, I would think that that's, that's, that's a, that's a major point.
That's not the point. I don't believe the borough of Stone Harbor should be purchasing Smugglers Cove for $5 million or more.
And you have made that clear. You just said what information could possibly be needed and I just answered, we don't even have a price. That's a pretty big piece of, of information.
If you accept the premise that the borough of Stone Harbor should be interested in purchasing Smugglers Cove, which I do not believe.
So, okay, well Frank, so the, okay, so maybe the price isn't important to you, but it may be important to some other council members and whether they vote yes or no to proceed. And there's other issues involved in that that we still need to find out.
What?
Well, we need to find out what the environmental status is of that property. We need to know how do we get an assessment on it and what does that cost? If we decide to sell the L-shaped lot across the basin, we need to get an appraisal on that and see how much that will go for and then apply that toward the price. We, we, we need to find out a, a, a couple of years' worth of income and expenses on running that operation there.
You know, we've talked about this, Ray, excuse me for interrupting, but we've talked about getting income information from day one. This is not anything new and nothing has been done on it.
Frank, this is, this is too important of a decision to this town to just right here and now put a yes or no on it. We're not ready for that.
Okay.
I, I submit that the council has not been notified of this L-shaped lot until you mentioned it at the SHPOA meeting on Saturday.
I said it two weeks ago at the council meeting, you can watch the tape. Said it two weeks ago at the council meeting. Did I not?
I'd like to add to that. I don't think that it is your position to be able to decide by yourself at a council meeting, a couple of words that I don't remember either, that we should sell a piece of ground.
I suggest you watch the tape and I'm going to tell you what I said.
May I finish?
I'm going to, no, I'm going to tell you what I said because I know what I said and you can watch the tape. I said, someone mentioned, perhaps we sell that lot. I'm just throwing that out there. That is what I said.
And talk about improper? It is my understanding that if the borough is going to talk about selling a piece of ground, that is a closed-session discussion.
Once you get into negotiations, sure, but to throw it out is
May I finish?
You know
May I finish? We have no right to sit at an open council meeting and declare that we want to sell
No one declared anything, President Rich. No one declared a thing. Someone, me
You mentioned it.
Did I declare it? Did I mention it?
You mentioned it.
It's not a declaration, it's an idea.
Charles?
That's, that's
Thank you.
That's fostering discussion. It's transparent.
May I finish my thought process? I would question our borough solicitor that we do not have the right to decide or mention that we should sell a piece of ground at an open council meeting without all of council getting information on that. I was appalled too, Judy, at the, at the POA meeting to find out that you did a PowerPoint on the plan of selling a piece of borough property without discussing it with all of
It was mentioned at the council meeting two weeks ago. It was mentioned, throw it out there. So again, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Clerk call the roll. Just one second. Clarify what the yes or no means. We have a motion on the floor that the borough of Stone Harbor no longer consider purchasing Smugglers Cove or the lot across the street. Is that your motion, Josie?
The motion is that we do not purchase the Smugglers Cove property. A yes vote would mean that you would support that. A no vote would mean that you don't.
Is everybody clear on what the vote is?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
No, emphatically.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
No.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Motion carries. I apologize to our taxpayers and our stakeholders for what I think is just a lack of, I don't want to say transparency because that's, that, that word's just been beaten to death, lack of notice. We could have had it on the agenda. I have a motion approving the bill list.
I make a motion to approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers properly endorsed.
Second.
No, there's not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Bernie Ed Parsick, 9925 Sunset. That was a show of shabbiness that Stone Harbor will be talking about for years. Shabby, Josie, shabby. You knew the tide was turning. You felt it and you, you couldn't take it. You had to win. This is an ego thing. It has nothing to do with Stone Harbor. This was shabby. You should be ashamed of yourselves, every one of you who voted yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
Joe Petrowski, 256 98th Street, Stone Harbor. I think it's a pity that the people of Stone Harbor did not have an opportunity to hear everything that needed to be heard in order to make this decision. This is a major, major decision for our town and I don't think there are 30 people here. I, I don't think that you have such a major legislation just decided on with that amount of people. We were moving along, we had pros, we had cons, and there was still an awful lot of information that had to be determined and I don't think that that opportunity was, was provided. I'm sorry about what happened and I hope that it can be changed. I don't think that that decision should stand. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
Kim Park, Six Stone Court. I have to agree with Bunny and with Joan, I don't feel that we had all the information. I was at the SHPOA meeting, I saw the presentation and I thought back to a week ago Sunday when the grandson of one of our former mayors told me the story about his fishing shack that was right there where Smugglers Cove is. It was built in 1909 before the town. They drove here every day when they wanted to come fishing from Philadelphia and they had the shack and an outhouse and that's how they started coming here. I saw the deed to that property that was signed by the Risley Brothers. I also read and watched the Zaccatas' family oral history that talked all about all the marinas that were in that area. None of them are there now except for our municipal marina and Smugglers Cove and I really feel like we should have explored this more. A lot of people knew nothing about this before the SHPOA meeting. Whether the final decision would be yes or no, I think they deserve to have that information because I don't think they knew about it. Some people do not come to the SHPOA meetings. I do not miss any. So I'm sorry about what happened and I hope that this isn't the final, the final decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I'll close. Public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.